According.
Yes, ma'am. Got all commissioners and the town clerk. I just got to text Mr. Morgan and I think we're set to go.
Okay, well, I'm sure Mr. Morgan will be joining us shortly, so. I will at least open, he will surely be here for the treasurer's report. Okay, good evening, everyone. And welcome to town meeting for the town of Upper Marlboro. It's a regular town meeting. It is March ninth, twenty twenty one. I believe it's seven oh two.
Correct.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Assistant Mayor, President Linda Pinoir.
Present.
Commissioner Sarah Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Janice Duckett.
Present.
Dave Williams, Town Clerk, all present.
Do you stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before I ask for the consent to the agenda, I will be taking one item off the agenda. We are moving item three, which is the resolution twenty twenty one oh seven, P A M C support, which was due for a board vote. We have some language that has to be revised and I'm moving this for a discussion item at the next work session. So with that in mind, do I have consent to the agenda?
Yes, I consent to the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, I am asking for approval of the motion to approve the February ninth, twenty twenty one public hearing minutes and the February ninth, twenty twenty one regular town meeting minutes, the February twenty third, twenty twenty one board work session minutes and the finance, finance report and approval of the treasurer's report as of February twenty twenty one.
I motion we approve meeting minutes and financial reports for the month of February twenty twenty one.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All approving. I.
I.
Bye.
Well, I should have noted.
I get a better pin.
Okay, moving forward. We will start with Greenwell Consulting Group report. And we have, I saw Tia.
Yes, and I should have changed my name.
There we go again. Jacob.
All right, um, yeah, good, good evening. It's good to see everyone. We're officially halfway through session, forty five days, so I just wanted to give some quick legislative updates for the state in general and also for the town. So one of the biggest topics this year is, of course, police reform and leadership has really made it one of their top priorities, both in the House and the Senate. And last week, the Senate finished their weeks of deliberation and in their hearings on a reform package. So the package contains nine bills, the biggest of which and sort of most controversial, both in Annapolis and in the media, has been one that would repeal the law enforcement officers' bill of rights and another which would allow citizens to review sort of the the internal affairs records of ongoing and past cases with police officers. Sports betting is another major topic. The gaming subcommittee passed out the sports betting bill last week with a handful of amendments that expand the number of mobile licenses and retail licenses. So there should be about fifteen mobile sports betting apps total come next year or at the end of this year and about another fifteen to twenty in-person betting facilities. Like I said, like I said last month, the closest one to the town would most likely be the the Washington Football Team Stadium and then MGM Casino would be the other one. So that that bill is now going to the full house floor this week and they'll take a vote and then it'll be off to the Senate. For the town, we had Commissioner Franklin testify on the House Bill six nineteen last week, which was which was great. It was very well received. Our team's been working with Delegate Harrison for about eighteen months now on this bill, which would allow for the town to implement speed cameras as a safety precaution on your, you know, very heavily trafficked residential streets. So we were excited to see that the hearing went well and the bill is moving forward this year. There's also finally been some movement on the federal stimulus package while it's still uncertain what exactly the qualifications are or if there are any at all similar to the CARES Act from last year. Right now, the town is slated to receive about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in relief funding. The numbers are subject to change, but the bill passed out of the Senate last week and just needs to make it out of the House one more time before President Biden can sign it. Both in the House and the Senate, there hasn't been any pushback for the municipalities and the counties receiving funds, which is good because there was some a couple of months ago when we had a different president, but there hasn't been anyone trying to sort of remove the the direct payments to the municipality. So it looks like the one hundred fifty thousand dollars should be coming to the town this year, which is great. And that's, that's all I have for this month. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to take.
Jacob, could you clarify what the funding's supposed to be used for? I know the last round of stimulus, there are certain criteria, but I guess this one's just general lost revenue, correct?
That's, that's what it seems like. So I was talking with Nan Mann and she's, um, she's with Chris Van Hollen's office, Senator Van Hollen's office, and she was going to get back to me on what exactly the specifics were. She seemed to think that it, the qualifications would be completely different from the CARES Act and it would be far more open if there were any qualifications at all. Before I go on, you know, any record saying that specifically, that is what I'm currently being led to believe and, you know, what I'm also sort of hopeful for because that gives the town and the county as well, a lot more flexibility with how they want to spend this money and how they, and how you guys sort of see your recovery as in, you know, as it pertains to you all.
Absolutely. Thank you. And just for the public, I think that we're kind of have it on the boards to jettled to talk about that at the next work session. We should have a bit more details, but so far it looks like it's going to go and replace the lost parking meter revenue we missed because the courthouse being closed for the past year. So thanks, Jacob. That's all I have.
Kyle, will we talk about it? Sorry, will we talk about it at the budget meeting next Tuesday at eleven?
Um, we could do either. I think we're just waiting to hear the specifics on. Exactly. I didn't, I didn't want to try and put it up there and then the bill falls through, so we're not counting any chickens but, oh, yeah, whenever Greenwell and Jacob and all them are able to get us some details, we can definitely bring them before the board. Invite Greenwell up and talk at one of the budget work sessions or the next March work session, however it works, so.
Thanks, guys.
Absolutely.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for Jacob? Hearing none. Jacob, as always, thank you for your sage advice and keeping us informed as to what's going on. Job you do.
All right, and thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, our next is up will be Public Safety Chief Bruce.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody is doing well. For the month of February, you'll see that we had ten disorderly report calls, one business alarm, two accidents. We had a child custody call, one check on the welfare vandalism, family dispute and suspicious person, one fight call and unknown trouble. The disorderly reports are kind of high for February, but a couple of those were repeat calls at one to three addresses, you know, somebody called and then thirty minutes later, somebody else called. So it's not ten independent incidents. It's generally two or three at one house. So everybody knows that. Still had all of our monthly meetings with the Prince George's Chiefs, the Maryland State Police, the Maryland Chiefs, those monthly calls and Zoom meetings that we have are still ongoing. Obviously, myself and officers of patrolling the town answering any calls for service and helping out the residents and anything that they need. Last month, we assisted the Board of Education. They had a staff package giveaway that they wanted to give all of the teachers. So they did that for two different days. So we assisted with traffic and helping them get the people in and out to make sure that everything was smooth and there was no traffic backups on the school lane and actually out on school in Old Crane when they were going out the other direction. Myself and Town Administrator Snyder, we participated in IPS, which is our parking vendor company, just trying to get all of those things tightened up to make sure that when they come on board, we have everything that we need and making sure that we have all of our equipment and all those things ready to go once the you know, the paperwork is done and they're onboard fully. Myself and Town Administrator Snyder, again, we participated in an M M L sponsor tabletop exercise, dealing with leadership during community division and civil unrest. It was, um, I think it was four hours, something like that, where we had to work with other individuals across the state of Maryland. There were other police chiefs, there were mayors, there were town counselors. It was a very good exercise. Caused you to think on your feet, you know, we had a mock civil disturbance with, you know, everything from protesting to the mayor's internets, conference call went down and, you know, it was just like a real life catastrophe and you had to handle it. So that was a good, good training. So. Also, I participated in addition to Coffee Club. They started that backup. They don't have anything new, just talking about the things that they generally talk about each year, I mean, each month. And then also, we received some mass donations from the Prince George's County Office of Community Relations. They were gracious enough to give us some more masks and face shields. So that's pretty much it for the month of February. If anybody has any questions, I'm willing to answer.
Hi, Chief Bruce, this is Patty. So I tried calling the non-emergency number and that non-emergency number, they go through a diatribe and it takes forever to get to actual report. And then it actually tells you if you're calling for a municipality to call your municipality.
Um, that's the first I've heard of that and I don't know why they would tell you that because they know that most municipalities don't have twenty-four hour a day coverage. So I'm not sure. That's the first time I've heard of that, but you still should call them because most of the municipalities are dispatched through Prince George's County. Um, it could have been if it was, did they say anything about a non-police related call to call your municipality?
Well, it's their, it's their recording. Their recording tells you, you know, if it's a non-emerg, if it's an emergency, dial nine one one. It's a non-emergency and it goes through all of this, all of these steps that you can, you can do and it takes a really long time. But it finally says if, you know, if it's a non-emergency, I should call my municipality. And this was during the day.
First I've heard of it. So I would say, and I'll tell anybody on the call, stay on the line and tell them what your issue is because either way, they still have to dispatch the officers, whether they're Upper Marlboro or whatever municipality, they still have to dispatch it through their system because most agencies don't have their own self-dispatch. That's the only, that's only the larger municipalities who can actually do that. So I'm not sure. I'll have to ask. But, yeah, I would say still call.
I, I just recommend you listen to, just call the non-emergency number and listen to it because it is really long and bloated. And honestly, by the time I was still on the phone with them, one of your police officers was on service lane and I was able to walk down and talk to them from my upstairs and I was still on the phone with a non-emergency number. So it's really, really a long conversation, but it did tell me to call my municipality and do we have a number to call our municipality for a, a non-emergency? Or do I just call the town hall and ask them to do something? I mean, what is, what is that process during the day since we do have police during the day?
You still need to call the non-emergency number because we don't self-dispatch or we don't dispatch from the station and that's the reason why the non-emergency number is there because most municipalities can't dispatch from their station. So you would call here and I would tell you, if I answered the phone, I would tell you to call the non-emergency number and the town staff would tell you the same thing because we don't dispatch police officers from the town. We never have and we never will because that's not, that's, you know, to do something like that is probably five million dollars to get your own station up and running for something like that because you have your own dispatches. So we don't.
Laurel and Bowie do that, right?
Yes.
That they're probably the only two, but they.
Ball, Bowie, Greenbelt and. Hidesfield. Those are the only ones that do it and Blainsburg.
So I, I think maybe their recording is if you don't live in one of those municipalities, you have to ignore it kind of because probably they have so many people that they're just trying to get those people to call.
Well, I just thought Chief would give me his phone and I'd just call him anytime I need something, right?
Presidents can also call, just call nine one one if they have any issues with the non-emergency number, correct, Chief? I mean, it goes to the same building.
Yeah, they're all in the same building, just sitting on opposite sides of the building. But again, you can call nine one one or three oh one, three five two, twelve hundred. That's the easiest way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Bruce? Thank you, Chief. And we will move on to Public Works, Mr. Bond.
All right, good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everyone as well. For the month of February, I obtained a few verbal quotes to replace and overhaul the large embed salt spreader as the end of January and the beginning of February, those storms wrapped up. It sort of had quite a bit of issues after being fixed. We had private contractors begin install of utilities on the Valerio property downtown. We also had Verizon contractors install a taller telephone pole at Marlboro Liquors in preparation for the five G cell tower pack. The maintenance and beautification, Public Works crews retrenched the French drain around Public Works yard. Maintenance, we performed maintenance and deep cleaning of all winter weather equipment before it was dismounted from the vehicles. Once again, we focus on things that have broken over the last few storms, headlight replacement, hinge pins, couplers, things like that that are easily worn out. Public Works vehicles were pressure washing degrees to remove salt and road slime and routine fixing and replacement of meter heads was also completed. We had W S S C contractors replace water lines along Water Street. Also granted, Inliner, a contractor for W S S C began pipelineing along Church Street and seven twenty five. For weather related, of course, we had multiple winter weather events that resulted in quite a bit of plowing, snow pushback and spot treating. These treatments resulted in usage of more than half of our salt reserves that we saved from last year. So going into the winter months, this year, we will need to replenish that. For refuse accumulations, things going to the landfill for the month of February bulk was sort of, it's actually been the slowest I've ever seen it. It was one point one eight tons and for yard waste, it was zero tons. Yard waste was for the majority collected and so, and a lot of it was actually mixed trash. So we sent those items to the landfill as well. It's the only reason why yard waste is at zero. Also, bulk was light and we were able to hold back on multiple trips to the dump and leftover accrues for February were dumped the beginning of this month. So you will actually see that reflect on next month's status report. And we had zero dump body rentals for the month. Are there any questions, comments or concerns?
Hi, this is Patty. Darnell, your, your, your group did an excellent job of cleaning up that snow. You, it was so amazing to, to wake up and see the roads totally clear when I knew other places were, we could get out of town but couldn't go anywhere else. So you guys did an excellent job. I wanted to ask though, are you, are you all responsible for sidewalks or are the owners responsible for the sidewalks?
I believe according to our charter, the actual businesses and homeowners are responsible for the area right in front of their property. However, as far as seven twenty five, Elm Street and things of that nature, we tend to take care of the longer stretches.
And the town did send, we had a couple of complaints and sent some letters to some of the businesses, at least on Main Street, who didn't shovel in front. We got some complaints. So we, the code enforcement did send a few letter, warning letters to them. Obviously, now it's warm, so it doesn't matter, but that's something we're going to kind of emphasize on next year and push through. But is the response technically the responsibility of the the person who has, who owns the property adjacent to sidewalk? Because I know Trinity also had some issues clearing their section of the sidewalk as well. So that, but I know they're going through a rough patch right now, so we didn't want to engage them too much. But that's, that's something we've been keeping an eye on. We got pictures of everything and proof because we did get some complaints. So I just want to put that out there, too.
All right, thank you.
And thank you for the compliment. I'll pass those kudos along to the team.
I have a question about having, this may be Kyle and you, about having to throw out all that yard waste. Can we kind of do something to remind our residents or is it like you could leave it rather than pick it up or you don't know until it's already in the vehicle? Does that make sense?
Um, for the most part, what we tend to see is we'll see people throw plastic bags at the bottom of a yard waste bag and as we throw it onto the truck, we'll actually, it'll, it'll burst open and we'll actually see it.
Okay.
We are, uh, in the next landings issued, the section on public works is yard waste disposal. And I know I'm going to be working with Darnell. We're going to revamp kind of our refuse notices and kind of work with code enforcement on that as well so that we can tag stuff and leave it if, if it's not in compliance. But that, that's something we're looking to pick up over the summer and really push hard.
Yes, and to answer the other side of that, if we do notice it beforehand, it is left to tag.
Yeah, and I guess if there's like, if you guys are like, oh, this house always has trash bags in it, like, is there a way we can do anything about that, Kyle?
So we're, um, that's one of the next ordinances we're looking to pick up, right? First thing in the summer is a refuse collection ordinance where we can kind of outline those. Right now, it's kind of a mix of a couple of older ordinances. But that's something that I've kind of put on the agenda to really push in like and set like some fines. Hopefully, first, of course, it's trying to work with them and educate. But then in the backend, if they keep putting stuff out that's not supposed to be mixing hazardous waste and we've left them some notices, have the opportunity for some fines and corrective actions at that point. But, so we have some stuff we can go off, but I think it can be stronger and clearer legislation.
And I, I think we, has it been a while since we put out directions or whatever you want to call it on electronic disposal, I mean, disposal electronics, recycling them opposed to just putting TVs out? I don't know if you've noticed an uptick in that, Darnell or? I, I have seen a small uptick and quite a few people actually asking. If I have the older notices in my truck, I will actually leave those as the tag for the things, for the items that we do leave or if someone asks where we can dispose of them. I actually talked to Kyle. I'm pretty sure sometime last year, maybe in the future of us doing a actual electronics disposal day where residents will bring their stuff to us and we will have the truck reserved specifically for that purpose, but that is something we would also have to work out with the county. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Bond? Thank you again, Darnell, and we will go on to the finance in Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, good evening, boys of commissioners. So for the month of February, we've seen continued positives within our revenue this, in the month of, sorry, in the month of February. We received fourth quarter monies from Verizon and Comcast for their franchise fees as well. We, of course, only seen about seventy-five hundred dollars come in for parking meter monies. Over past years, we've, we start to see some increases around this time as the, the weather breaks and we start to see some more spring weather. However, we don't know how that position will still work with some of the things that's going on with a lot of, of course, Zoom or virtual meetings going on, but we'll try to continue, continuously to track that. We also have some sizable deposits in taxes as well. And again, that's an area that we'll probably start to see a decline with as we get to, as we're near the latter stages of this fiscal year. I think we'll probably see a sizable one in the month of June, possibly, right before the fiscal year turns over. And I know we will not see a earned income tax payment for the month of April every year or fiscal year, December and April are months that we don't receive earned income taxes. And that's an area that we've been, uh, we've done pretty well this fiscal year, actually more than we've anticipated as well. On the expense side, the town has paid its normal expenses to its consultants and contractors. It's operating needs such as legal fees and salaries and things like that. We, and that's very similar or similar to the public safety and public works area. On one area, well, I will break out as we get out of that winter stage or whatnot. I'll make sure that I was trying to start letting individuals know of the overtime in that area. As Darnell had mentioned, his guys did a, a great job with the, the snow that we've seen over this, uh, this, I guess, calendar year. But in our terms fiscal year and there was some overtime for the month of February as well. So that's something that I'll make note of as we move forward. Just in case individuals want to know how much that they're patrolling or the public would like to know how much they're patrolling after hours and for public works, how much work that they're doing after hours when we have these weather events as well. As you'll see at the bottom, you know, we were running ongoing a net profit right now at the end of each month. As I mentioned, we did previous forecasts where the end of the year might not be as such. I do know that we have a sizable invoice that is coming our way, probably any, any week now from Maryland State Retirement for the employer contribution. Roughly probably be about sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars. And some other ongoing things that we continuously are paying for as well. I just talk about some of the things for the month of narrative for, just to give you an idea of a year-end forecast, as I mentioned, there won't be any earned income taxes for the month of April. And about that late Maryland State Retirement payment, I apologize. The prop. Um, and about that late Maryland State Retirement payment, I apologize. Uh, the pro, the budget process. Um, as we approach budgeting, uh, well, no, we're in budgeting season. Um, uh, myself and Kyle uh, and the board of commissioners have been discussing uh, many things for the budget process. Uh, myself and the treasurer, Commissioner Franklin uh, met last week to go over some things uh, that has been input in our first draft. Um, draft proposal. Um, we was talking to all the departments as well to make sure that we are considerate about the things that should be in there uh, without annexation, the things that may or may not need to be in there uh, with annexation as well. And we have our first uh, draft, budget draft meeting approaching in the coming weeks, I believe, uh, next week, I believe as well. So, so that budget process is ongoing. Uh, the, the, uh, the board of commissioners and the public will hear uh, many variations not to confuse a lot of, not to confuse us all. Uh, but most certainly we have uh, about three more months till we get to that end goal for the next fiscal year as well. And for right now, oh, my last thing I wanted to talk about was the business license update. So I believe the last work session or the town meeting, uh, board of commissioners had asked a few questions about the business license program. Um, so I just want to give a, a quick update. And what I'll do is I'll provide a memo to the board of commissioners about uh, what I was able to find from at least uh, some of the other uh, communities or municipalities in Prince George's County as well. But currently right now, uh, we sent our, our invoices or notices out to the uh, local businesses. Uh, in uh, November of twenty twenty, lowered that fee from three hundred dollars to forty-five dollars. Um, this fiscal year with uh, the means to potentially adjust or to look at and see uh, what is a good set number for the town of Up Marlboro. Uh, right now we have fifty-four applications. Um, so fifty-four uh, businesses have applied, but not all fifty-four have paid, uh, forty-four have paid. So, um, I think some businesses, uh, they see a problem. Um, I, a little bit of our site and what I mean by that, Kyle had made some uh, some notations about this last uh, meeting about this potentially getting the software updating our financial software. So when businesses go into our website, they go to one area to uh, fill out an application. And once they hit submit, it doesn't directly take them to their payment, a payment site. Uh, they often call back to find out what they have to do to pay and I have to redirect them uh, to another site and or step within that, so that they can go make a payment as well. So I think that might have been some of the, some uh, hiccups that some businesses see as well, but uh, like I mentioned, fifty-four applicants and uh, forty-four of those have paid. Um, I've reached out to a few uh, municipalities as, as mentioned in Prince George's County. And this will be highlighted in my memo to the board, but most of the uh, the municipalities I've reached out to, actually all except for one, I reached out to nine municipalities. And all except for one has a business license fee program that exceeds a hundred dollars. So Eagle Harbor was the uh, the one small municipality whose um, business license fee is twenty-five dollars. And the remaining, as I mentioned, were either ranged from a hundred dollars to roughly four hundred dollars. But there were a few that uh, charged like a fifty dollar application fee and goes up to about a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars. And of course, we tried, I tried to look at municipalities that were similar in size, similar with it, their business structure and also have the same amount of foot traffic that we have as well. Um, so, but again, that's something I'll put in the memo. Um, there was one municipality that did not have a fee structure like we did, well, like we do. Uh, theirs were based off of gross uh, receipts and that was Berwin Heights. So um, that's a little bit of the business license research that I've done. And I'll, again, I'll put pinpoint that in uh, the memo, but that's all I have for the finances for the month of February.
Thank you, Will, for doing that and explaining it so clearly.
Hi, this is Patty. Um, is there a detailed report of all of the spending or is this all? This, I didn't see it in the packet, that's all. I didn't see it in the packet, all of the breakdown for the different areas. Is that not being shown anymore?
It's in the packet, it's after the meeting minutes because they're approved along with all the uh, you know, the treasurer's report and the meeting minutes. So at the end of the meeting minutes, there should be the treasurer's report in the packet.
I thought I was looking at it and I never saw it. Okay, I'll go look for it again. Maybe I'm looking someplace in the wrong spot. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Morgan before I let him go? Thank you, Will, for that presentation. And next up is Dave Williams from the clerk's office.
Um, I do not have a report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will move on to committee reports. Uh, first up is the historical committee.
Um, we have a, we had our meeting on the twenty-first of February. Um, and that was the day that we decided to put out the um, the, the, the uh, oral history for Black History Month. Um, I hope everybody saw it and if not, I, I, I hope you get a chance to look at it. Um, we spent probably three or four weeks working with these folks to get it done. Um, it was real enjoyable. They actually enjoyed it. Um, and we're considering doing a couple more, just because uh, it was, it was enjoyable for, for both the participants and, and us as well. And then um, we will have our next meeting on March twenty-first.
Okay, next up is the events committee. Thank you, Patty.
Um, events, my two committees, events and green team didn't um, meet. So there's not a lot of events going on and the green team was just, everyone kind of was like, oh, wait, we had a meeting tonight. So we'll work that out for um, next month.
Okay, uh, sustainable communities, Evelyn Stevens.
Hello, everyone. Not much to say this month other than uh, we have gotten additional confirmation that we have monies about fifty thousand dollars uh, in our facade improvement program, which this year we're also are going to be able to help people who have some uh, improvement on the inside of their building. Uh, so we're, we'll, we'll, we'll be working on that now that we've got the heads up. Uh, you know, we're famously going to be working on uh, getting that information out to our businesses. So we're very pleased to to know that we did get some money. Uh, and our next meeting uh, hopefully will be March the seventeenth at one thirty.
Okay, thank you. And next up is the arts council.
Hi, yes, good, good evening, everyone. So the arts council is moving right along. Um, thankfully, um, we have some really experienced folks on the team um, that have put some work into getting everything up and running in terms of finding out or putting together some documents, finding out how we're going to spread those funds out through like semi-finalist honorariums and administrative fees and advertising. Um, we also, this is a grant through M S A C. So the good news is, is that um, they're working on this. Um, if anyone knows someone that is interested, soon they'll have a website up. I think it's gonna go through our website. Is that correct? Um, uh, Kyle, in terms of application, it's gonna be a two dollar fee.
Yeah, um, well, actually the, the uh, the arts council is gonna absorb the two dollar fee.
Oh, they are?
Site, yeah, so it's gonna, we're gonna link it through the town website. They currently have a, a page, the arts council is a webpage. Um, and uh, so it's gonna go through a separate system, but it's gonna be linked to our site. That's correct.
Right, okay, so um, that's about it, but um, we're well on our way and once, um, if anyone wants any additional information. As Kyle said, they have your own website, so it's on at least under the town's website. Um, so you can click that link and check out updated information for the group. Any questions?
Yes, what is the name of that grant source? You just said I'm unfamiliar with.
Oh, it's M S A C. The M S A C grant, so. What's the acronym?
Well, it's E N or can you do it so I can do the, put it correctly?
Yeah, it's the Maryland State Arts Council, um, Public Art Grant. And I, I just got an email today. I have to forward it to the arts council. The, the county arts council is also opening up a municipal uh, public art grant. Um, so that's information I'll be sending up, but that's really exciting as well. So now we have two pots of um, of funding to apply to. So we'll stay tuned for that.
Well, that's very exciting news. So that's really good. Thank you, Kyle. So this is gonna go towards when we ta, talk about the mural that we've been hoping for. Some of that, so it, it's more exciting news to come. So uh, we look forward to seeing what the art committee is gonna do for the town.
Thank you, Janice.
Yes.
And do we have a representative from CERT?
Yes, I'll speak about CERT. Um, they actually, last month, they actually assisted Office of Emergency Management with doing some um, emergency preparedness bags. Uh, they did that on two different days and then they had their uh, regular monthly meeting. And uh, that was it. That's it for CERT.
And we did have a representative of the Marlboro Bon Tui Fire Department, um, but they are on an accident in Bowie. And they just asked for more units, so it may be a bit. And I was gonna see if the board wanted to bump up the PG Fire uh, letter issue as well, but maybe we'll give them some time to see if they hop on, but we do have uh, Chief Wright with the Richie Bon Tui Fire Department to speak about that letter when we get to that agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say that Marlboro Fire Department was here, but they got.
I saw them and I thought, where'd they go? That's one of the, had, not hazards, but that's part of the job. Moments notice. Okay, uh, we will get to that letter shortly. Uh, we, it shouldn't take us much longer. Uh, next up is the commissioners' reports. Uh, Sarah? Do you have anything to report?
Um, well, I really enjoyed testifying um, at the um, state on the bill regarding the speed cameras. That was super fun, so I hope I get a chance to do it again. Um, and I am plugging away at the vision plan and we are starting to get into warmer weather. Uh, so I did wanna kind of start thinking, we've got the budget to do, so I don't want to distract from that, but I wanted us to kind of start thinking about getting out in the community and talking about what people want to see for the future when we can be outside and it's a little safer for everyone. So those are my reports.
Okay, uh, Janice?
Um, thank you. I've just received just some calls from the, some neighbors um, or rectory um, concerning like parking on their grass and things like that from other neighbors. Um, these are incidents that are happening pretty much after hours. Those neighbors that are partying pretty late and into the early morning, maybe it's just like one, but it's, it's causing a situation for quite a few neighbors. Um, so I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out what we can probably do, maybe in terms of putting up some signage, um, possibly. I know some people don't want to see another sign. I mean, you know, but you know, I'm just trying to think if, if anyone, you know, has any opinion about that. And um, because of course, we had some, someone else talk to me about their, their yard being um, just trashed with the parking. They're actually taking up the entire street, so you could barely get through there on a Saturday at night. You could barely get through there. So if you live with rectory, you're probably gonna have to come around to school lane to go down the back way to get to your house. So, um, chief, is that something, I did talk to this particular neighbor to let her know to call three-one-one. I'm not sure if you received um, a call about that. It was um, on Saturday night, I don't know if that was in your report, but I did let her know that she, you know, to follow the process. And um, hopefully like we'll be able to take care of it, but it is becoming a situation. And so I don't know, the person is pretty concerned that um, it could get worse as the weather changes. Because, you know, they like to gather and, you know, people do, but it's pretty small back there, that, that driveway. So um, the street and people's uh, you know, their yard space. So um, I don't know what we could do about it. Just want to put it on the radar.
So I know right now.
Oh, so no, I was gonna say, yeah, I'm looking at for Saturday, there are no, that was the sixth, right? Yeah, there are no calls for anything.
I'm sorry, chief, it was Friday. I apologize.
Nothing Friday either. Yeah, so the best thing to do is, is to tell them to, you know, call the non-emergency number. That's the first thing, but the other thing is have them talk to their neighbor. You know, if this person is a neighbor, you should be able to reach out to them and just say, hey, look, you know, I have a problem with you having little get togethers or whatever the place may be, but just make sure that your um, your uh, visitors are respectful of the neighborhood, respectful of people's lawns, and if they even want to take pictures to show the neighbor, look, this is what was left in my yard, this is how my yard looked, based on your guess. Um, hopefully they can, you know, have a little bit more neighbor friendly uh, environment the next time, but definitely have people to call, because if we don't know about it, you know, I understand they told you, but basically officially, there's no report of it. And if it was that bad, somebody should have called other than the person that you actually talked to, because I'm sure there, you know, the houses are right next to each other. So definitely have them call um, and, and or reach out to their neighbor with, for like a better words, pictures or knock on their door and say, come look now, look at all this stuff that's laying in my yard. So hopefully whoever car that is, uh, just tell the people to come clean it up. I mean, that's.
Yeah, um, I did that, the client, so I know that they need to call, not the client, I'm so sorry, I'm used to saying that. But I did mention to the uh, the neighbor to um, con, that, that's my, always my go-to, contact three, three-one-one. But uh, they feel as though it, it's, it could be a situation if they actually confront their neighbor. So not everyone is comfortable doing that and she's done that before and it has not worked. So she's at the point of no return with this situation. But yes, I know you said that she didn't call, so I don't, you know, I will make a note to let her know that she should try to reinforce that to tell her like, please make that phone call, but it's not just a neighbor, so I just want to tell you, but it's not. And I also have a couple of photos that she sent me. I probably should have said that first, but I do have some photos that she sent me and it's several cars. It's probably like twelve, maybe fifteen cars blocking up the street, running on top of people's grass. I mean, just parking anywhere. So um, also this person probably needs to, we probably need to look at their property as well, because it seems that there could be a, a citation in the future.
Okay, oh, yeah, but definitely they have to call because we can't, I mean, again, showing us pictures after the fact doesn't really help. I mean, even if the county police go out there, we can at least track the call from when they, you know, on scene, how long they stayed there, who they talked to, as well as the pictures. And if it becomes a problem, then we can address the individual homeowner who's having these uh, parties, but with no police interaction, I mean, really, it's a, it's a civil matter until it becomes a police, now if they're littering, that's another thing, but you know, if she can't talk to her neighbor, then she has to at least call the police and make them, and you know, aware of it, then we can follow back up, but you know, I, I know people like to call the commissioners and all that other stuff, but that doesn't help when it comes down to somebody having to go to court or becoming a bigger issue, because them telling somebody who's not in official capacity to do anything like police work, it doesn't help, because we can't pull, you know, we can pull an address and say, okay, there was ten calls for service there every weekend. But right now, nobody on the street called, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I can tell you, I'm gonna reach back out to her, but I hope she didn't have a Patty situation and that could be a reason why that she didn't hold on, you know, you know, to make that report. And, you know, I can attest to Patty's situation, because I've had the same situation in return, in, in terms of making a report. So it is an exhaustive call that some people just give up on, so I, I can attest to that. So I will talk to her. I'll reach back out and let you know.
And one thing on rectory I want to bring to the commissioner's attention, currently it's, you are allowed to park on rectory lane. Um, there's no Um, there's no regulations against it. Um, even though, as we've seen, even during the day, there's been some cars that have start, used to, I've never seen a car park on Rectory Lane. Um, because they have wide driveways, but there is, I think I know the house, and in the middle of the day, there's the car park taking a path of the roadway. Um, so that may be an endeavor uh the board wishes to consider. And making it no parking on Rectory Lane, uh cuz it is a pretty narrow street and barely fits two cars pass at a time. Um, because so it it sounds like if people are parked on the street, they're technically in compliance, cuz it's a, it's, there's a, it's not a no parking zone. Um, which may be an issue as well, so that's something we could bring up, and. I'm sure the majority of residents on Rectory, if they have experienced this issue of the roadway being blocked, it's not gonna be a uh. A big concern for them, they may welcome it. I know we talked about doing no parking on one side of Spring Branch um about five, six, seven years ago. And that was met with resistance. And then the HOA, Marlboro Town HOA requests us to make one side of Marlboro Drive, um no parking as well, so that's something the board can do. Uh and it's usually the passage of of a resolution. So just if that escalates, it's always an option as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
We look at that?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for that, Kyle. That was my next question was, do do we have no parking on Rectory Lane? But and I I could not remember, uh because we've had so many different issues with parking. Uh and it was never really a problem on Rectory Lane for a long time, but I think we've had a lot of change in residents on.
There's been maybe an occasional car parked every so often, but now it seems to be routine a vehicle park, so that's the. That's the issue, but they have such long driveways, it's it's uh it's never really been an issue, but that may be something the town wants to. Uh consider bringing up, and um we can put it out there, we can put something in the next Landings Newsletter as a teaser to see if people are interested. Um, and then if we can put the resolution, we can discuss it more at the March work session and pass a. Resolution at the April Town Meeting, um could be a potential timeline if this is a pressing issue.
Do you think we could, if we put it on our work session agenda and then just like. Kind of publicize that it was on the agenda, so folks could come into the call and kind of, maybe we could make. Public comment on what the opinions are part of that? Is that something we can do?
We could accept written, or if they would just wanna shoot an email in support of something like that as well, they could either join the call or send some sort of supporting documentation as well.
What I have found in the past, like when we did it with Spring Branch. I just said, we're having. A discussion at the Town Hall on this date about parking on Spring Branch Drive, and I put that note on every door. And we had standing room only. As long as people are aware of it, so it that would probably be the best way to do and get that out there. And people will come if you say you're going to restrict their parking.
Well, they may welcome this one, uh but we could also put some signage up on either end of Rectory, cuz it mainly affect the rectory residents. We could put some signs on the stop sign. Saying the town's considering uh parking, visit the town website for more info, call Town Hall. And then there we'll have the information for them to join any meetings.
We can, we can also make that uh. So I don't have a problem walking up and down Rectory Lane and giving everybody a notice. That way, I know everybody on Rectory Lane is aware of it. Uh, so.
Sorry, Linda, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, that's that's an easy thing to do. Yeah, nice day. Up and down, one, two, three, everybody's gotta notice. That way, they can't say they didn't get it, they didn't know about it.
Yeah, I think that's a great opportunity.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we should, like, timing-wise, if we should have a meeting for it, or if. You think we can handle it at the next work session? I don't know.
We could um discuss it at the next work session, have an opportunity for people to discuss, and then approve something at the April Town Meeting. Or depending, if it gets worse, we could do both at at the next work session.
Well, it would also depend on what kind of reaction we got at the work session. If we get three people who show up and there's only three people on Rectory Lane that are complaining. You, that's a different story, but if you have, you open a floodgate when you say, come and talk about it.
Yeah, I was just thinking, um, do, should we do it in April, so that people have more time, or should we do it in March?
Uh, it's really just the time sensitivity of the issue, if uh. If the board feels like it's an issue that should get addressed pretty quickly, we can move it March, or we could push it to April.
Okay, I I'm looking at it this way. We have a resident who is at Woods End. And I can appreciate that. If uh she, what we don't want it to do is escalate any sooner than. It needs, you know, it can. I I don't want the situation to escalate for that neighbor. And this is a way for that neighbor to voice her opinion along with others as well. And it she would probably be more comfortable in that environment. So I think we should do it at the work session to just let everybody know that that it will be discussed at the work session.
Yeah, cuz it's not just the one resident, it sounds like. It sounds like there's parking all along it.
You'll have differing viewpoints on it. And that's point of the discussion.
Janice, do you think March works as or is too soon?
I think March may be too soon. Um, I know that it needs to be addressed, because I think with the good weather, it we're gonna hear about it again. I do believe that, but I, you know, I don't know, I think that March may just be a little too soon to make sure that she's. There and available. I think, you know, with everyone's work schedule, I know this person is working every day, two jobs, so, you know. They may not be able to, you know, make that call so quickly, you know, with, I know it's in two weeks, but that may be too quick for them. To be able to jump on a call. I would like to say so, yes, so that we can get this ironed out, but honestly, I don't think so.
Well, and it gives people more time to kinda draft an email, if they wanna draft an email, or kind of. Uh we kind of move it into April is my thinking, cuz I know I would see the note, oh, I need to tell them, and then. I would realize I forgot, cuz it was two weeks later. So, that's why I was thinking. Maybe we should do March, even though I know, you know, it's concerning for the one person immediately, but we gotta think.
Janice? If you could pass along her information and I can uh maybe contact her directly and see what her thoughts are.
Okay. No problem, sure.
You can make a decision, and she'll know that we're addressing the situation.
Yes, absolutely. Sure, absolutely. Thank you for that.
Okay, and thank you for your report. At this time, I just wanna take a few minutes. Uh, Saturday, I attended the funeral for uh Mrs. Helen Ford. She was the president of the Board of Commissioner for eighteen years. I saw saw you there, Sarah.
Yeah, Marcella came with me.
I also went to the uh the uh the viewing prior to that and had a long discussion with her son. She is some, she was a force to be reckoned with in this town. She may not have always done. Uh, but we think at this point in time was right, uh but she always had the best interest of this town in her heart. And in her mind. What a lot of people don't know is the CAB is here because of Helen Ford. They wanted to put the CAB in Largo back in the seventies. And she fought to have the county stay here because we are the county seat. Fought for the post office to be built here. She fought for everything that we, you know, uh she felt the town deserved. So I, she is a uh. A wonderful individual to talk with and and chat with, uh as I'm sure Sarah can attest to. And I've sat on her front porch and had many a conversation with her. She and she will be greatly missed. The town has lost a great statesperson. I do intend to uh. Highlight her for Women's History Month as our contribution to women's history. And as we noted uh this past week. Uh, women have been very influential in the town of Upper Marlboro over the years, much more so than men. Most of our commissioners have been women. And we we again have a full female board. We had one with Tonga and Wanda and myself. So I think that we will continue to be that force that drives this this town forward. And uh Mrs. Ford was just uh the beginning. So, and you will see that uh come out. Hopefully very soon. But if you have any uh. Anything you might want to pass along about Mrs. Ford, please feel free to email town and let us know. Um, a lot of people knew her very well. Uh she knew everybody. And during her tenure. Uh, again, someone we will miss greatly.
And Mayor, with that, um since it is Women's History Month. Um, in your honoring of her, for one of those days, I think it would also be appropriate for us to also honor. Um Tonga Turner in some way, because she is the first African-American mayor of the town. So I think that would be a great opportunity to honor her as well. In some way.
Well, we have a whole month to do those things.
Yeah, so, yeah.
History Month, so we will, we will uh, and if anyone else has any suggestions. Feel free to bring them forward.
I think it might be nice to also um put Miss Evelyn on the spot, because she has done a lot. Down, and she's been here a long, long time too, so. Maybe she's a little bio. No.
We, like I said, we have a whole month to to do some finagling there.
You're gonna convince her?
I've been known to get her to do things she didn't really. But I, she doesn't really get to say have a say, actually. Uh, she is another person who has been like, she's done it quite a bit for the town just in the past few years.
Yeah.
Even more so, so uh. We have a number of women to thank over the years.
Yes, and also into include Wanda, of course.
Yeah, maybe we can do one a week. That's, there's probably other people we're missing, but. We can do the four of them. Oh, we've missed some weeks.
Okay. Okay, with all the reports uh finished, let's get on to business. The first item up for business is the Charter Amendment Resolution. Oh, one dash twenty twenty-one. Establishing board positions. This is for a board vote. This has been before the board, before. The body. Several times, so uh David, if you could read it for us, please?
Um, I would love to, Madam Mayor. Um, I just wanna point out that this will be is technically the second reading. We did have a public hearing uh on this particular uh Charter Amendment Resolution. Back on the ninth, uh that was the official first reading. So uh I won't stall anymore. Charter Amendment Resolution number zero one dash twenty twenty-one. A Charter Amendment Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland. Amending the Charter of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland by creating the offices of Town Administrator and Chief of Police. And by permitting the official use of the alternative title of Mayor by the President of the Board of Commissioners. And making certain stylistic grammatical and non-substantive changes there too. And I'll just point out uh. Uh, for those that may have the copy with them, the last page. Has a schedule of publication. Uh, there will be four weekly publications. Giving the fair summary of the uh. Uh Charter Amendment Resolution that'll run um March eighteenth, March twenty-fifth, April first, and April eighth. Of the Prince George's Post, but it will also be at the same time on the town website. Uh, that's a uh. Uh mandatory schedule for a Charter Amendment Resolution to give the opportunity if anybody. You know, if if there is an objection to it and uh that then the board can uh look at uh anything, you know. Either either making changes or uh passing it as is.
Okay, do I have any questions or comments before we take the vote? Hearing none, do I have a motion to?
I motion that we approve Charter Amendment Resolution oh one dash twenty twenty-one establishing positions.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes, so noted.
Thank you. Uh, the second is. Resolution twenty twenty dash oh six. Which is a the extension of the. I'm sorry.
I I was muted. I was gonna read aloud the things.
Would you please? That way, then I don't have to go there.
Yes, Mayor. Uh, the Town of Upper Marlboro, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero six, session regular town meeting dated. March ninth, twenty twenty-one. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve an application for a planning assistance. We were on the uh. The agenda is wrong. That is an error that happened in uh. In the changing of all the uh. Documents, so.
Now, the the twenty twenty-one oh six is the extension.
For the P M A C.
Now.
P A M C.
No, that's twenty twenty-one oh seven. According to.
Some confusion, um.
The agenda has been messed up.
So since she tabled the uh the P A M C, Mayor, we could just skip right to the Declaration, the continuity of Declaration. Um, twenty twenty-one oh one, and I think in the resolution, it's written as Resolution oh seven. And then we'll just rename the P A M C one.
Okay.
When it, when it gets approved down the line.
Did the numbers just get flipped? Is that it?
Yeah, we had some interchanging, and then the DOE has technically two numbers, so that didn't help, uh so we apologize. It's got a declaration number and then a resolution number, so all kinda just compiled, so that that's our fault, we apologize.
The the agenda is forgot the errors, but the documents are numbered correctly.
Okay, so this one is for the extending the state of emergency.
Yes, so we'll start start over again, man.
Let's start that over again.
Um, okay, so this will be. I will just go right into reading the uh intro. The Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland Joint Declaration of a Local State of Emergency. Town Emergency Order Number DOE. Twenty twenty-one dash zero one and Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash oh seven. Resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, extending the local state of emergency. Initially issued on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And again, I emphasize it's a joint resolution, so it's number, at the bottom, you can see at the bottom where the page numbering is. It is uh appropriate to call it the Joint Order Number DOE twenty twenty-one dash zero one and Resolution. Twenty twenty-one dash zero seven.
And I can provide a brief overview if you'd like, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Um, so this is, as everyone knows, we've extended the Declaration over time to extend it, um requires a board vote if it goes over the thirty. So this is, as everyone knows, we've extended the Declaration over time to extend it, requires a board vote if it goes over the thirty days. So this is the fourth extension. It'll run through June thirtieth, three to four months as usual, so we're not doing it every month. There's only two real changes compared to in it. One is it allows general government to be a bit more flexible and allowing more onsite hours at town hall. Previously, we had one person in a day with rotating days when people were in. Now that the general government staff and pretty much the staff as a whole in the town is getting vaccinated as well, the town offices remain close to the public. However, will allow maybe two administrative people in and it just gives that flexibility to increase some hours and start getting some stuff done. And then the second part is it extends the fifteen-minute carryout-only parking spots. They were due to expire at the end of the last D O E. This one ties it to the the current status of the county courthouse, if, what phase of opening they're in. So pretty much at this point, it lists as if it's in phase three or below, which are the lower occupancy levels. The pre-parking spaces remain, but once the courthouse goes to four, five, or six stages, four, five, or six, where they can see more cases, more in-person jury trials, and that's when the need for parking will go up. And the resident, and the visitors patronizing the businesses as well, because they'll be downtown, go up as well. And that's when we would remove those sign spaces. So that's the only two changes, but I can take any questions.
Um, I just, because we're talking about this, I wanted to kind of talk a little about the new CDC guidelines, and I don't know if we want to push that to talk about that later or now because it's relevant now. But I know that it's becoming, you know, safer for fully vaccinated people to be around each other. But I know that, like, so I got my second shot today, but it's gonna be two more weeks until I'm considered fully vaccinated. I don't know how the rest of the town is. But I think, and I don't know if we can ask for that information from people because it's technically medical information. Or if we need to maintain things, but I mean, I think even if we're vaccinated, we need to be continuing to wear a mask, covering our nose and our mouth with the mask. Making sure to respect others by keeping them safe. And doing that until everyone is fully vaccinated. And then we should be able to go to the CDC. But I think people should, if they're uncomfortable, they should be able to kind of talk to Will or talk to commissioners or whoever.
Absolutely, yeah, that's a good point. I know Will and I were gonna work on sending an email to staff once this was extended. And I think we got some additional information on CDC guidelines from Legit or Chesapeake, one of the two. I know Dave forwarded to me as well. We're gonna try and incorporate that in there as well, but.
Okay, so you guys are already on it.
Yeah, and that's, and in the email, we're gonna talk about that as staff are vaccinated. The town hasn't required it. But once they get their second shot, if they could just forward the paperwork over to H R, it's voluntary. We'll emphasize that because we haven't set any restrictions, but you just forward the paperwork over to Mr. Will Morgan, so he can just put in the employee file and we can move from there.
Maybe we should have, like, masking required until Will. So then he doesn't have to say individual persons, but he can be the person that says, okay, everyone has had two weeks since their last shot and is fully vaccinated. So now masking is only necessary when residents are in or whatever.
Absolutely, and we're also following the county and state guidelines as well as, as they require masks in public buildings. I think that'll probably continue for us as well. That's something else we're playing off of. Because it's, I know today Governor Hogan released a bunch of stuff, but it's got to come down to kind of level and reopening capacities, but keeping the masks in place, which it's, that's Declaration does still did. That's why I put that extra line in there so people don't think it was a free-for-all.
Yeah, and I think, all right, too, when we start to open up, we should look at some of those, like, signs. We don't have to get a really cute one, but they have, like, cats and making sure that it's covering your whole face and all that. Just to put on the, we should see if we can get something like that for the office as more people are coming.
Absolutely, yep. And that's something we'll be working through as well if, once we, before we plan to reopen the staff, which I don't think we'll do before July. But we do have a lot of measures in place already as well, hand sanitizer, screening, but that, that's all stuff that we're, we're definitely gonna work on. But we'll definitely bring everything to the board to make sure everyone's on board and ready to go before we even think about reopening. But thank you. Those are all, yeah.
We, we do have regular meetings or calls with the state and the county as to where each one has us, so to speak. So we, we have to take all of that into considerations. Both Kyle and I and Chief as well are on those calls every week. I get a call on, with the county and then we get a call with the state and various calls in between. So.
Really setting a good example with our masks, too.
So.
Um, with this, I think it would be also a good idea to touch bases with Insurty since they are our H R consultant and see what they think in terms of the H R standpoint in dealing with employees and so forth. I think that they would be good to reach out to since we do have them.
That's a good idea, Janice.
Yeah, to keep us from trying to guess and guesstimate different situations.
That's what we gave them for, yeah.
Right.
Okay, with all of that said, we still have to vote.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh seven regarding the Joint Declaration of a Local State Emergency.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All ayes, so noted.
Thank you. And the next order of business is a letter to the County Fire Chief concerning coverage. At this time, we have Chief. Who, who is with us this evening?
We have Chief Wright of the Ritchie Volunteer Fire Department, and I think Marlboro just texted me as well. They cleared the call. They should be hopping on in a bit. But I can do a quick overview and then hopefully by that time Marlboro's joined on as well. We can turn it over to the
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. If you would give us a, give everyone a quick overview of our concerns.
Absolutely. So over the past month or so, there's been three working fires. It's just called around, not in the town thankfully, but immediately outside. One in Balmoral was a townhouse fire. We had another townhouse fire on Colonel's Choice Road in the villages. And then there was a third fire as well. I'm sure Chief Wright may know off the top of Marlboro. But in those three cases, it came, we realized that, oh, here we go, Marlboro's joining now. The issue of ladder truck coverage in the Upper Marlboro area. There were three, it used to not be an issue. There was a ladder truck at the Marlboro Station. Up until about three or four years ago, they moved it to the crew station where it sat up until just a couple of months because they realized that at the Marlboro Station wasn't helping because if there was a fire in Marlboro, the Marlboro Fire Department take the fire engine versus the ladder truck first. So at least if it was in the crew station, it would be coming as well. It, it's just as close. And then we also had ladder trucks at the Ritchie Fire Station and a ladder, tower ladder truck at the lower Bowie Firehouse. They have four stations, so at the lower one on Pointer Ridge Drive. In the past six months or so, and the Chiefs can correct me, those three ladder trucks have disappeared. And it, for an extended period of time, I don't know, one forty-five, the crew station has definitely been, they've eliminated that service. And then the other two ladder trucks, the Bowie one and the Ritchie one have been out of service for quite some time because of mechanical issues. And it sounds like they may or may not come back. So the town has previously engaged the fire department when there's an issue of they moved some ambulances around. We sent them a letter. And then we, the fire chief came out, talked, worked through some stuff, and it all worked out. So it seems to be the process that we do every couple of years. We kind of touch base. So that's, we drafted a letter, trying to, overall, the fire MS department is doing an excellent job protecting the town. There's just this one area concern of a ladder truck not being in the Upper Marlboro area. And I can just pull a map over. And so we just wanted to bring it to the board and the public to discuss before we send the letter, see if it's a good idea. And then any feedback we get from the County Fire Chief, we can bring back. But here's kind of a map. And I'll turn it over to Captain Kendall and Chief Wright if they want to kind of give a better in-depth situation of the ladder trucks.
Hello, everybody. This is Captain Wallace from Marlboro Volunteer Fire Department. So most of you guys have seen or heard me around. So like Kyle was saying earlier, our station is located downtown Upper Marlboro, Maryland. So when a fire comes out in our first due area, we don't, a ladder truck here wouldn't really benefit the citizens of Upper Marlboro, like the town. We take the engine first, which has hose and water. The ladder truck at Ritchie, which Chief Grady Walter Wright, he's in a meeting as well. His ladder truck is due to over seventy-five percent of our first due. We have a good working relationship with those guys, too. And I don't know if they're having issues with the county or getting a new ladder truck in their station, but he would be able to expand on that further.
And can you confirm just the, the status of Tower forty-three and Tower forty-five, the other two? I just want to make sure I have my facts straight that they're, I guess Tower forty-five is gone completely. And Tower, at least hasn't been in service for six months, maybe?
Yeah, the tower moved from forty-five to forty-three and then hasn't been in service since we lost leaves on a tree, so we're pushing seven months, six months at least.
Thank you. And I guess now we can turn it over to Chief Wright to kind of give an overview of the status of the Ritchie ladder truck.
Yes, good evening. I'm Chief Walter Wright of the Ritchie Volunteer Fire Department, Station thirty-seven, labeled there on the map. I just want to thank you for having me this evening. So just a little bit of background information and what's going with our ladder truck. Historically, Ritchie was only supplied to engine company. It wasn't until two thousand and ten, under the direction of the County Fire Chief at the time, Eugene Jones, that he put a county-owned ladder truck that was moved to Ritchie from the Capitol Heights Fire Department for a better area coverage. As Captain Wallace stated, Truck eight thirty-seven is typically first due truck to majority of the area, or if not third due to the greater Upper Marlboro area. Truck eight thirty-seven, it's a nineteen ninety-six ladder truck, so it makes it the oldest frontline apparatus in the county. It's been plagued with mechanical issues since we got it in two thousand and ten. Year after year, we're told by the county to do everything we can to help ensure that it lasts till the next year. The next year comes and goes, and we're told the same thing. Despite the department and the membership putting in countless hours in station, performing maintenance on the truck, it typically develops mechanical issues that can't be fixed in the station. And it ends up going out of service to, to a shop, typically sometimes taking a month or two to get back in service. Over the last five years, it's typically a common trend where we're able to keep it in service for six to eight months before one of those mechanical failures happen. And then, like I said, it's lost for an extended period of time. Currently, the truck is out of service due to an accident. It was involved in back in mid-November. To this date, it's just set in the same place at the county's apparatus maintenance facility since the accident. We haven't had any communication. We haven't been able to receive any communication back as regards to its status. We were just able to get partial of the equipment off of it, so we could even get a reserve in service if the county has a reserve ladder truck fleet. But we still are not able to get even the equipment back from them to even make that a possibility if one comes available. And also to this date, we haven't had any communication about it being replaced. So at the end of the day, we're still left with the, the oldest truck in the county. And no idea if it's getting fixed or when, or even replaced at this point. If you have any questions or need any assistance regardless of this matter in the future, don't hesitate to ask. Kyle has my contact information. And again, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And I can open up for if any commissioners have any questions on the situation. But as of right now, and the two members of the fire department can correct me, but the the closest ladder truck to Upper Marlboro is the District Heights Truck twenty-six. About ten miles away, and if you Google map it, it's seventeen minutes. So that's obviously concerned. I think actually on the Balmoral call, Captain Wallace, if you can correct me, it was the Glendale ladder truck was the first arriving ladder truck, correct?
That's correct. Glendale was the first arriving ladder truck and then Anoronto Tower five, which is twenty minutes if you GPS it away, so.
So one, one fire isn't an issue to the town, but the fact that it's happened three times is what kind of alarmed us to, to the situation of the fire MS coverage surrounding the town. So that's just, the letters kind of just help, opens up the dialogue. And usually we'll get contacted by the senior county fires, express concern, go back and forth and, and resolutions made is how it's worked in the past, so.
Okay, as far as my comment goes, fire in downtown Upper Marlboro do not mix well. We know this. And anything we can make, it assures swift dispatch on this would be very welcome. We, I've watched the courthouse burn. I've watched the corner water and main burn.
Yes, Mayor. And to speak on that, Truck thirty-seven was actually the first new ladder truck to the fire, the Owl's fire.
Yeah, oh, I know. I mean, you guys were great on that. And we are blessed to have you right here. And we'd like to have you as fully staffed and fully equipped as possible. It is to the town's benefit. So I, any other questions or comments?
I think this, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And I think we need to send a letter and help get you guys the equipment you need to keep us safe, so. Thank you for keeping us safe.
And just as I, we don't expect this to be a quick resolved issue because a ladder truck is pushing a million dollars for the county. So I just, the fat boys are concerned, let them know, and maybe they could come back telling us that they're planning on ordering a ladder truck. And that's, they'll try their best to get a reserve truck into Ritchie, but just, yeah, the first step's just reaching out and then go from there.
If you don't, if you don't ask, you, you won't know. And expressing our concern is what we need to do.
So nothing else we can, we'll go forward and we'll, we'll send the letter if there's any other concerns. And I just wanted to thank Captain Wallace and Chief Wright for joining us tonight. And for everything you do.
For your input. And all the wonderful work you do on behalf of the Town of Upper Marlboro. And the surrounding areas. Okay, next up is administrative updates. Kyle, that would be you with legislation projects and initiatives.
Thank you, Mayor. So first up, the heritage area, we haven't gotten too much leeway on that. We're still moving forward with the they have the consultant working on that expansion project. The playground and the solar, the town hall solar projects are both still at the county DEPI stage. There have been a couple of fees that have popped up that we, that the, the permit expediter, who was hired by the, both contractors weren't expecting. So instead of them approaching us every time with one of these required fees, and we even reached out to DEPI to see, at least on the playground side, because it's a public community playground and a public works project, if we could waive some of the fees and they, they politely said no. So we just requested both firms to just give us a change order at the end with all the permits and fees. That way they can just on their end pay the fee and move it to the next stage in the permitting process to get this moving. Because I know the playground is, they expected to have the permit by now as well and the same with the solar, so we're working through those. I know Mr. Morgan's working with the auditing firm and the accounting firm on the financial policies. Hopefully we can get that up and running and effective in the, for the next fiscal year. So we're starting the next fiscal year out. Solid, the Pepco vehicle charging stations are, I could probably take it off. It's on hold over at the Showplace Arena. They, it's been in construction mode for about six to seven months. I'm not sure what the status of those are. But they did mention them on a Pepco call that I was on, they were talking about that. So I'll, I'll see if we can get those up and running, but obviously the, the plan is to bring those charging stations into downtown Upper Marlboro and other areas as well. The mural grant application, as Commissioner Duckett touched on, is moving forward. And it may be, we're thinking as two murals are coming through, we may request one mural be funded by the county, one mural be funded by the state. So that's plans moving forward. Main Street, Maryland, I reached out again. They apologize for the wait on getting us back to our affidavit or affiliate status. They've been bogged down with a bunch of the COVID relief funds have been flowing through their office. But they promised to hear back, or I should hear back from the next couple of weeks, so we can get that going. The employee handbook and job descriptions, moving on very quickly. I know I've talked to both Chief and Mr. Bond about their job descriptions for comments. And Mr. Morgan and I are speaking with the HR firm tomorrow. We have two formats for the job descriptions. We're going to talk over with them. And then once a format selected, we're going to pretty much merge all those into that format. We can bring them before the board at the March work session hopefully, and then approve them in April. So be on the lookout for that. Same with the handbook as well. Solar project, I talked about park enforcement upgrade. As everyone knows, we went with IPS. And so we've, IPS sent us the startup package. We gave them all the information we needed and where there's even a cost savings. Because when we ordered the printing, we don't have to order new ticket paper for the printers. And we don't have to order new printer hardware. We're going to keep what we have and use it up and then order new tickets from them moving forward. So they were actually pretty impressed that we, we could do that. We, we made the tickets generic so that we could, because we were planning ahead for to doing this. So they said that save both time and money, so that, because apparently ordering, right now the paper for citations being used for masks. So that's in short supply, so the fact that we had a supply is moving forward. So hopefully we can get them through the process and get everything going soon. And we can switch over and send passport, the letter, letting them know that we're going to be no longer using them. I have not heard anything back from the Levy and Western Branch grading project from DPWNT. As the boards aware, they, they said back in October they would have it. But I did reach out to them and I'm trying to work with them and Park and Planning about the path along there. So the grant funding for pathways, sidewalks and whatnots coming up and opening up. There's a couple of different programs on the state and federal level that I want to apply for. And moving that forward, so I'm trying to get approval from Park and Planning in the county to at least let us apply for grant funding. And if we get the funding, get the project moving. So I'm just trying to get their, their consent to do something like that, so that we're not waiting too long. So we're trying to take a proactive approach. So I'm working with them on that annexation. We've engaged the surveying firm finally, which is very exciting. We're trying to get them out here in the next week or so. They're trying to figure out their schedule. So that they can do the final boundary survey. And from that, it goes to attorney best to draft the annexation. Resolution document, we did door knocking with Commissioner Franklin and Mr. Bond. It was pretty cold that day. And we were able to talk to some residents who are excited, some who weren't. But we're also working, I know Commissioner Penoy or Mayor Penoy is working with one commercial property and then one more registered voter, which is, we need one property and one voter and we're completely solid, ready to go. We've also sent, and that, that's where we're at, so on that. The budget development, we're pushing through for that. We looked at the calendar last work session. I'm going to be posting that to the town website, so the residents know when to follow along. The sewer repairs are continuing around town. We were able to move the noisy truck off Church Street to the school lane. And I now realize how noisy that truck is because I can hear it inside when it kicks on. So hopefully Commissioner Duckett can't hear it from her house, but we haven't gotten any other complaints from that. So again, it does sound like the truck's starting up, but it's, it's starting up to power the refrigeration unit. So I completely understand the frustration that came out of Church Street, so I'm glad we were able to work through that. And then we're also working with WSSC, they duct tape no parking signs to our parking, nice new parking meters downtown that pulls paint off. So we're trying, yeah, so we were able to get the duct tape off before it kind of stuck to it too bad. But yeah, that's, we're trying to work through that and figure out what's going on, what they're going to be doing down there. But you may see no parking signs with WSSC on the Pratt side of things. And the racial equality, I know is always a big thing moving forward. I definitely have to work with Commissioner Franklin on the board to move that forward as well. But that, I think that is it. I have, anyone can ask me any issue. I know, working with the state environment about the issue of the pallets still on Water Street. They're sending an inspector and I have a reminder, my calendar touches base on them every two months. And we're also coordinating with CSX on the pilot. We got some next door, I don't know if anyone's noticed, on next door, there's a feed going on. It started with the issue of trash dumped on the property on Old Crane Highway going toward Route four, up on the hill. There was some debris across from the church. That is outside of the town. So back in December, when we first noticed that, we did put it over to the county. Not sure what come of that. So we checked in with them on that and then, so that popped up on next door. The town was able to engage and let them know that we're working on it and ways that directed residents to go call the three-one helpline. And then also the District Nine County Council member whose jurisdiction is until that property is annexed into the town, then our code enforcement would kick in. But because it's outside of town, we're very, we're pretty much a resident, a concerned resident neighbor at that point, which is kind of odd to sit on this side of the fence, I'll admit. And way through the process, but then also in that, it came up, the debris on the railroads at the CSX crossing that have been there for several months, possibly going on a year. So I was able to go through and we reported to CSX, they actually have a really well, well put together reporting website. And I talked to one of the inspectors and they're going to take care of the big pile of debris. They weren't sure why it was left there. And then they also said that there's going to be some other work happening there as well. So there may be some more equipment stage over there, but they're definitely going to take care of that debris. So that's some issues we popped up monitoring on social media. I'll take any questions.
Oh, thank you for that, Kyle, too, because that was a, it's a huge eyesore. So I think a lot of people have noticed that, I'm sure, well, you know, and they probably think that it's the town of Upper Marlboro that could do something about it. But thank you for reaching out to try to resolve that issue. Really appreciate it.
I have a question too. Is the adopt a highway still a program? Okay, because the seven twenty-five does have adopt a highway signs not far from trash. There and it's sponsored, I don't know.
The sponsor isn't ideal. I know that much, but I'm not sure. I know I've tried to engage State Highway about us adopting some roadways as well and getting, because we pretty much adopt like seven twenty-five and Main Street. Have our public works and the town adopted, but I don't know if that program's too much involved. But I know the construction debris, I don't think the, the sons of the Confederate revolution would be able to pick that up anyways. Is the name on the sign, so as. Outside the town limits right now. It's not in town. As soon as it becomes annexed, that will, that's on my list to address and work with State Highway on. And if it accidentally gets pulled over by a public works truck, that's.
Yes, adopting that would be a good problem.
Okay, anything else for Kyle? At this time, I will open the floor to public comment. Anyone is more than welcome to make a comment on any subject whatsoever.
I actually, sorry, I forgot one thing in my report. And I just wanted to let everyone know that I've started to get some responses from HOAs. Remember when we talked about like an HOA collective? So I'm going to probably be setting up a meeting in the next couple of weeks for that. Just wanted to like not blindside you with it when I set up a meeting and I didn't mention.
Hi, this is Patty. Kyle, thank you for giving me back my sleep. And now if you can quiet the peepers, I'd be appreciative.
Peepers?
The peeper started coming out now. I can hear them. I couldn't hear them when, when they had all the, that, all those, the generator running.
They're nice sleeping music. People pay.
And Patty, you should be very happy they're there.
Hey, I believe me, I, I would much rather hear the peepers than what I was listening to. Oh, just a silly point, the historic name for that area is Frog Town.
It's apt.
It's told to me by a former Tulsa resident of the area.
That's an interesting fun fact. Thank you.
That'll be on the year-end quiz.
Oh, the town was designated Tree City, USA. I apologize for that. I completely forgot that. So I, I contacted the State Forestry Service. They're going to have our supplies by Arbor Day, which is the first Wednesday in April. And so I'm trying to think of what kind of unveiling ceremony or something we can do. Because we get Tree City, USA signs is my understanding, to put on all the entrance signs. So hopefully we can do some sort of unveiling there.
We can plant some crape myrtles for Jenna.
Yes, exactly, so.
As long as you don't plant them anywhere near my yard, I'll be fine.
I don't know how that escaped my mind.
Did have the most amazing crape myrtles in town. They're so awesome to look at.
Not when your car is parked underneath them.
But it's her, it was her driveway, not mine. I just get to enjoy them.
Your car is parked underneath them. It is not a nice tree. Not your favorite. We, we do have a number of record trees in the town. We're going to try and locate them and send you on a scavenger hunt for them. Because we do have state record trees.
That's a great kid event, too.
As part of Tree City. And I'm looking to find some seedlings for, to distribute for the children to plant their own tree. I've got a couple of nurseries that are going to let me know. And planting a tree is a good thing. It gives children some ownership and they can watch it grow. I've got three trees in my backyard that I planted from seedlings from the Arbor Day Society thirty years ago. So.
I think Pepco was also giving out trees at some point in time, weren't they?
They, they give out trees like, they have to do with like the shading and the like reducing your energy bill. And you can apply for them.
Helen Ford has some trees cut down. And they were supposed to give her replacement trees.
They, I think she worked with them to get Vicentia's instead. I know I could talk to her about that because she has since had Vicentia's on the one side. So I think it's all, I will see in a few weeks. I think it's Vicentia's where that tree was to like balance it. But yeah, so if they take down your tree, they give you more trees. But there's also a program where you can get free trees to, to like, kind of shade your home. I know this because I tried to get them to give me trees, the red buds that I have at the street, and they wouldn't because they're not near my house. So it has to, it has to do with reducing your energy cost.
See, now we have, we have the question, do you put up solar panels and not trees? Because I wouldn't have a tree in my front yard because my whole front of my house has solar panels and I don't need to shade them.
Yeah, my, my, I can't use solar panels because of the way the house is oriented.
See, ours have solar panels.
Yeah, I guess it depends on your orientation to the sun.
Yeah, as much as I would like to have a front yard tree, no. So they're all in the back and we have a cheap backyard.
So the other thing I have is, just to let you know, the last week or so at night, there has been a small white vehicle running up Church Street at about sixty miles an hour. And this has been like two or three evenings in the last week. And when I say sixty miles an hour, I mean, he starts at Water Street and he revs it. He's, he's, he's literally putting the pedal to the metal by the time he gets to my house. To the point where it actually scared me that he was going to hurt somebody coming up that road going that fast. Just, so I, I talked to Linda and I know she told me that they're considering putting some, finally getting maybe another police officer on to cover this. But I also wanted to state, I don't know if it would hap, if it would help, but, because I can't get a picture that quick. But we can certainly put a camera out and videotape some of these crazy speeders if, if that would help. Can you report a speeder based on their tags?
I don't think so.
Actually, you can, but you have to call the non-emergency number or nine-one-one to report it first.
Yeah, well, at sixty miles an hour up Church Street, they're gone before I can, I can, the fifteen minute phone call to non-emergency number, just saying.
If you have their plate, though, I think is what Chief is saying. Yeah.
Yes.
So if you can get the tag number, okay. And then like you mentioned, we are trying to hire additional officer to expand out coverage hours to even. Do you say it was the same, same car, same time every day?
It's, it's, it's.
For most days.
Between nine and ten and he's coming from Water Street. I don't know which way he's coming into Water Street. But as soon as he hits Water Street and Church, he flies. And I mean to scary speed, not just, you know, hey, I'm going forty. No, he was literally sounded like he was drag racing up Church Street. Also, I wanted to let you know, there's two kids on dirt bikes running around the neighborhood once in a while. No tags, no lights, but they're running around on, I saw him come down Church Street at least twice in the last month or so. Just letting you guys know what I see.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, Reverend, did you want to hop in?
Yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. Reverend Kevin B. Montague from Providence St. John Baptist Church. God bless you. Thank you all so much for allowing me to come in to speak on behalf of Passibility State and Junior. He wanted me to share something that he wanted our church to play, well, to actually do. He's interested and we have a plot of land somewhere around our church that he wants to use to have, to create some type of urban garden for the community to come in to be able to plant whatever they want to plant. We don't have any specifics on that yet, but we think it would be a good touch to have the community be able to come and be a part of PSJBC and be able to plant and be able to just look at the different things that are growing out there. So more information about that will come, but I just wanted to bring it to your, your attention. I don't know if there's anything we need to do to make this official or to, so that we're able to do it or, I don't know. But just give me your heads up that this is something that we have, that we would like to do. You know, this is a good time that you can have a community come together. Even in a social distance world, to be able to plant flowers or whatever, strawberries or whatever. So that people can stop by, say, wow, that's beautiful. So that's where we are.
Such a great idea. As you were saying, I'm thinking maybe our green team can coordinate and try to work with you guys. And I don't think anything needs to be done, but if you want us to see if, I think we only have like two or three members, but maybe someone would be.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, one of your members is a master gardener.
I believe so. I believe one of our deacons is a, is a master gardener. Yeah.
They want to be on our green team.
Yeah. So thank you all for allowing me to share. And we'll, we'll, I guess I'll talk to Kyle or Sir to talk about, to see who's on the green team and maybe have a, a meeting to see, where do we go from here? How do we actually make this a reality?
Right. Sounds like a field trip could be in order to go. Instead of sitting on Zoom.
Right.
Now that's warmer. So I think I can, we can definitely work and maybe get that set up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a green, I, I have, I don't have a green thumb, but I could see one in the future.
I'm working.
Partnership, if I can see it.
All right. We accept everybody, even those that have a almost green thumb. Hey, one day, one day you can have a green thumb.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Hearing none, I would like to call this meeting adjourned. I have 8:52.
Right.
And good night, everybody. Have a lovely rest of your evening. And we will see each other again in two weeks at the work session.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.